November tenth, we have one applicant who is a candidate for city council. And so this way, we will be able to authentically look at all of them live. If he makes it on the city council, then we will compress our considerations. So David, do you have any, and oh, you want to call the roll?
I was going to call roll, yeah.
All right.
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Councilmember Burt. Councilmember Holman.
Here.
Councilmember Klein. Vice Mayor Ness.
I'm here, and apologies for continuing to finish my dinner.
Councilmember Scharf. Councilmember Schmidt. Mayor Shepherd.
I'm here.
Six present.
All right.
Can you call my name, would you?
Price.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
All right. She's, yeah.
You and they work for most enthusiastic.
All right, well, our first applicant, we'll have ten minutes, is Kenneth Ho. And to be followed by Quing Huang. So you will sit here. This is a microphone here, the yellow thing. And I'm going to give you just a couple minutes to do an introduction. And then if you want me to, I'll give you a little signal, and then we can start with questions and answers.
Sure. Okay. Kenny Ho, architect. Well, I was born and raised in Taiwan, came to the United States when I was twenty-six. Got my bachelor's degree in architecture back in Taiwan. Went to school in Michigan, in Auburn, so got my first master's degree in architecture and urban planning, back in nineteen eighty-nine, the end of eighty-nine. Then continued, you know, pursue, you know, another interesting part of the artistic pursuit, I should say, I went to a theater school, theater design school, back in New Jersey. So I went to Rutgers for one year. But, you know, Broadway wasn't my cup of tea, so returned to study architecture back in UCLA, and so stayed in Los Angeles for a year, and finished up in Berkeley. Got my second master's degree in architecture and urban planning. Spent a few years teaching in San Francisco Academy of Art University, and spent a few years doing projects in Guam, and back in Asia, in Japan, and Taiwan, building hotels and multifamily structure in the mid-ninety. And started working for different cities on the peninsula from nineteen ninety-eight. That was the year I got my architect license. And so, you know, so I worked for the city of Millbrae, town of Atherton, and I worked for the city of Palo Alto until middle of this year. And now I'm on my own, as I'm practicing as an architect. So architecture is my forte, and something I enjoy very much, and I don't have particular agenda, well, because I have been through so many different architectural schools, and have been, you know, studied with different, well, a lot of famous architects, from east coast to, you know, California, different architectural studio, and stuff like that. So end up, I was trying to pursue, you know, in a sense, architectural theory, you know, theory and history and all that. So I, I'm, you know, I mean, I know there are some debates about, there are some people have certain type preference, you know, for certain architectural style. But to me, good architecture means a lot of things, you know, it's not only aesthetic, but also function, function, and functionality, and, you know, have to be something that people can enjoy, and with right scale, right proportion, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a space. There's a spatial condition, rather than the visual condition that people should look into.
Okay.
So that's about myself, and my past fifty-two years of enjoying architecture.
Fifty-two years, okay.
Yeah, I'm fifty-two or fifty-three, I mean, I.
Somewhere around.
Somewhere around there, yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Does anybody want to kick this off? Karen? And Greg?
Hello, and thank you for applying, and for joining us this evening. So you mentioned that you've worked for these number of cities that you mentioned. Did you actually work for the cities, or work in those cities?
I worked in the city, in the building and planning department.
Okay, right, that's helpful.
Yes.
And then you have background in architecture and city planning.
Urban planning.
Urban planning, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Urban planning, so, and then in your resume, or your application, you mention that good architecture occurs where openness, sense of sensibility, and incoming, or welcoming gestures overrules the debates of traditional versus non-traditional.
Mm-hmm.
So are you familiar with Two Forty Hamilton, the building that's across from City Hall? And what, tell us what you think about that building, that project.
Two Forty Hamilton, the one Ken Hayes, the new office?
Yes, and it's where, what's the name of the, yeah, just right across the corner, Habits, Habits Church.
Something Habits, Habits Church.
Yeah, I think is the name of it.
Oh.
So right across the corner here, and at the end of Ramona.
Okay.
So tell us what you think about that project.
No, I have not seen the official blueprints and plans and all that. I've read that in Palo Alto Weekly. So their new design seems to be contemporary and modern, by Ken Hayes.
Mm-hmm.
Right. There was me, I have not have a chance to even look very much into detail, like full-size of plan, I, no.
So tell me what your view of compatibility is, then?
Compatibility means scale, means, you know, Hamilton's is not, you know, comparatively is not a very wide street. From my rough understanding, there will be height issues and all that. So if, if, if a good architecture that, you know, if a good building that people could feel comfortably from, let's say, walking on the street, or even drive slowly with the city allowed, you know, speed on the street, and have a very good feeling or sense of the, the architecture, that will be a good architecture. Again, I mean, I, if I get a chance to study the blueprints and all that, I can tell you more. Something I want to mention is that back in architecture school in the mid-eighty, we, we studied Robert Venturi, Universal Pennsylvania architect, you know, he wrote a book called Learning from Las Vegas. Because, well, the whole thing about learning from Las Vegas is that how you approach your architecture in what sense. So that's, that means the interaction between you and the architecture. I, I hope I can get a chance to start doing that, along with, or, you know, well, all the, how do you call colleagues in the Architecture Review Board, and Planning and Transportation Commission, Commission, plus the city council. So I don't have particular feedback for that. But I appreciate carrying the question.
Thank you.
Sure.
Greg?
Appreciate your enthusiasm.
Sure.
Spirit of making. I was struck by one of your, you say you want to advocate for ageless design, or without style. What did you mean?
Where's that?
Okay, well, ageless, including that my, my dad, ninety-three, he works on University Avenue every day. I work with, along with him all the time. So ageless, age means something to you and I, right? But if, well, how does that correlate to style? I remember back when, when I was still in architectural graduate school, there was a competition by a famous architect, Ren Koheus. He's the one designed the public library for Seattle, city of Seattle. So the title, the name for the competition is Architecture Without Style. So I mean, a lot of time, people just keep, you know, put a hat on, you know, something, because you have to, at least, we do talk, we use the term facade all the time. So you have to, you know, give some, some certain type of proportion, or color, or, you know, even the three dimension of the mass, to the architecture. But sometimes, well, how do you design the roof, and what type of roof, and how do you label the type of architecture that you're designing with? Very easily, people will associate that with certain type of style. Well, how about if architectural without style, not easily to be labeled with certain type of style, but it's good architecture. So, well, that's something ageless to me. I mean, if we say, the historical, the Spanish, you know, you know, the colonial style, that's a good architecture, not necessarily. Maybe people have a very strong, a stronger feeling for that, but maybe I should know more, and why people feel more strongly about Palo Alto should have that type of architecture. For example, the old postal office, or the, the Avenida, the senior center, maybe people feel great about that, sorry.
So really, you mean not by a standard style?
It's, it's, yes, Greg. Be open, yes, I'm sorry.
I was going to say that.
Be an open-ended conversation, I should say. Yeah, rather than say, no.
We have one quick question from Mark.
No, it's all right.
Unless you'd like, yeah, would you like to, just have a minute left here, would you like to wrap it, wrap up with anything, any?
I don't have other thing to say, like I said, you know, I'm, I, well, yeah, sure. Please, go ahead, Mark, yes.
Which is, you know, it sounds like you know a lot about a lot of the buildings in Palo Alto. Can you tell us about, you know, one that's your favorite, or one of your favorites, and kind of what makes it special, and then better in your mind than, than others?
You know, I do like, I know some people like Two Forty-Five Linden Avenue, that, you know, it's, it's a more traditional style, I should say. But then some of Kenny's Hayes, you know, some, there's architecture, I mean, what's the Survey Monkey, what the Survey Monkey building, I don't really like it. I mean, that architecture design is not quite complete, particularly the interrelationship with the street, and Alma, and Linden, and all that. So a good architecture, like I said, will bring people in, but not refuse people. I mean, but that's kind of abstract concept, in a sense. But how can we do it better?
Sure.
Yeah, I think you want the, the Architectural Review Board, like Lee and, you know, the colleagues have done great job so far, and we just need to continue doing stuff properly and, and all that.
Great.
Thank you, Mark, sure, appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for applying.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Could I ask one thing before I go?
Nope, because we are at the ten-minute mark, and we need to go to Quing Huang.
Well, then don't tell us about learning from Las Vegas.
That type of, yeah, you're right, I agree with you, Liz, thank you.
So, do we have our next?
Yes.
Oh, I'm, no, I'm just, we only have ten minutes per applicant, so, I, I'm just gonna, yes, go ahead, and if you'd like to spend a minute or two with an introduction? Yes.
Do I need a speakerphone, or?
Yes, you do, because it's video.
Hello. Okay. My name is Chi Ming, last name's Huang. I worked in the local high-tech company for almost like twenty years. I got my master's degree in computer science from University of Texas at Austin, working at Oracle, Cisco, big companies, and I live in Palo Alto for more than six years, have two children, one go to Terman, the other go to Brioni. I have been building a few houses recently, you see those pictures I built, too. That's the two of the house I built, right beside Gun High School. I specific, interesting in the architecture design, and looking at the good, appreciate good architecture design, and very interested in the materials, especially latest technology material building those. For all the house I build, all crowds, so have LED lights everywhere, all the lights are LED, and I have the new charger for the, for the electric cars. And I have been a volunteer in the local community, helping term and game, game club to invite industry, expert from game industry. I also volunteer in Silicon Valley Worldist Technology Association, the board member. Recently, I helped a couple of city council running their campaign, reach out the local voters. I'm the first generation immigrant from, from China, mainland China, and I feel like I'm pretty much represent the local, a large piece of local, like, double-income working family, with children go to the school. So I would like to, if possible, I have the opportunity, I would like to contribute more to the city, and bring local resident view to the Architecture Review Board.
Great. Anybody want to start?
Okay.
Liz?
Do you have a favorite house in Palo Alto? Clearly, you like houses, you like housing design, you show us two.
Yeah.
These are both somewhat similar.
Those are actually side to side, actually face to face. There's a one, those two are together in one site. Those are sort of like Spanish style, I think it's customized California Spanish style. I, I actually participate a lot in those design, together with the architect, and also like the exterior, and also the floor plan. Do you ask me a specific house I like, or is that, okay?
A particular one that you run around, and you think, oh, I just love it.
Okay, well, when I build this two house, actually, I refers a lot to the house at the corner of Baker and Maybelle. There was a Spanish, traditional Spanish house built, designed by Roger Kohler, and I'm, I think I'm really honored to be on the same list with him today, his last one. So I, I think that that house is designed very neat and simple, and without, I mean, the traditional Spanish style, without any window trim outside, it's just clean cut. And the chestnut brown window frame with a walnut dark door, claw, and speak easy. So everything is, looks like Spanish, and short stockpile walls, really nice, go with it, red, like dark red clay tiles, and ivory wall, so I think that's very nice one. And I think I also see that Roger designed a lot of nice craftsman-style house, like I, my friends actually moved in one of his Two Two Eight Santa Rita, which is just built last year. It's very nice with the sightings outside, with the column, and large porch, and I really enjoy, you know, to watch his, appreciate his design.
I think he's coming later, if you want to.
Yeah, I should say hi to him.
Yeah.
Big fan for him, yeah.
Gail?
Thank you, welcome. I have a question, you've given us a couple of examples of residential structures you've worked on.
Okay.
Could you describe your role in these projects, the types of projects you've been involved in, and what kind of training have you had in order to participate in these projects?
That's a very good question. So for those two houses you're looking at, I am actually the owner for those two houses. From the beginning, planning of the house, like where the position of two houses, same lot, and how to protect the tree, actually, on each, at the back of each house, there is a protected tree, city protected tree, one is eighteen-inch redwood tree, the other is like more than twelve-inch Costco oak tree. So I spend a lot of time to actually study the tree code, from the city, tree protection code. So I, the first draft of a floor plan is drawn by myself, and I draw that, I give it to the architect, which is now Roger, some other architect, and then they actually designed those two houses for me. And I participated in the gobbles, the eaves, all those things, design exterior, and then I, I also build the house myself, with, working with subcontractors. So I gained quite a lot of experience on the building code and material. Now, actually, I sort of like spend my part-time to help my friends building their residential house, or help them to do the major remodeling now. And also, I'm studying some document recommended by California State License Board, I'm thinking to, to take the task to get the general contract license next year.
So you're, you're mostly self-taught, you haven't had formal training, is that correct?
Right, right, that's true. Well, my formal training is computer science.
Got it, right, yes.
So that's why I represent the residents here.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Greg?
You have a statement, made your presentation.
Uh-huh.
Saying that ARBs want to leave final decision to the owner's discretion.
Well, I, I think there's something behind, before it, in front of it. So before that sentence, I said.
Before, the sentence before it starts, the property will be occupied by the property owner.
Yeah, so basically, what I'm saying is, so that's one thing I think, we hope, as a resident, so I, I know that city have a lot of code, and regulations, and municipal code, and a lot of times, when we review, even not architect review, just IR review, a lot of times, I feel like if the design is compliant with the code, and also with other cities' requirements, we probably want to give more room to the architect, and the owner, to have their own imagination can be showed, show up here, because.
The planning department will check the codes and regulations.
Right.
So what role does the ARB have?
Well, the ARB, I, based on my understanding, ARB majorly review more commercial, commercial buildings, rather than residential. Most time residential go, just goes through IR review, and that is really a lot of issue. The ARB, I feel, should look at the whole neighborhood, make sure that whole design's consistent and coherent, and also the design meet all the requirements, and like, for example, like setback, you know, like, I think the, just now Karen talking about the new, the new building designs, modern building, I don't feel that's an issue, because modern building and old building can still fit together, like, think of, you know, you have, in San Francisco, have very modern building and traditional building, they looks better together. I think the major issue, where people are talking about, is like the sidewalks narrowed after the new building's built. I think those, those code have to be enforced. And also, I, I feel like with the latest technology, we can make buildings more comfortable, and more modern, not, not saying like the outlook, I mean, the exterior modern, but, you know, the, the usage, I mean, the interior and everything is, is more modern, easy to use, yeah.
We've got about a minute left, but I wanted to ask you a question. It is going to be about commercial, that you're going to be trying to drift them into a better design, you know, from some of the things that we saw at the beginning, and then we saw how things got shaped. What is it that you, like, what's a building that you like, like on University Avenue, or, well, California Avenue is kind of dusty right now, but around town, that you think really does, did do well during, during the architectural review process?
Did well, you mean the new building, or?
Right, yeah, I mean, what, what, what are you looking for in, in bringing to the Architectural Review Board, and what is, you're clearly in residence here.
Right.
And so this is going to be a big shift.
Right.
And typically, we, there is, you know, architectural background or something, so I just wanted to have an idea of what it is you're thinking of when you consider joining the board, and how it is that you would be identifying with the type of architecture that you prefer, or, or something like that around town, just if you could talk about the commercial a little bit.
Okay, well, if you ask me what I really prefer, and I prefer, I prefer the University of Stanford, I think those buildings are really nice.
Like Stanford.
Those, those historic buildings, very nice, and they still meet the current usage requirements. And if you're talking about like latest building, I just drive by Alma, and I, so I think there was a building, was built by Palo Alto Housing Corporation, on Alma, which I think is one bad, like, senior, I think, I think that low-income, low-income house.
That was not the housing corps, but, yeah.
Right, 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 and then I, I, I kind of do not like it.
You don't like it.
Because, because, yeah, it's, it make it that street really crowded, and then with very tall buildings, and very narrow sidewalk, I, you know, I just feel like it's, it's really, really like stretched out, stands out there. As, I think from, more from a local resident, my feeling is how to feel like comfortable. I do not pay a lot of attention on the details of architecture design, but overall, whether it's comfortable, whether I walk on the street, I feel like this is Palo Alto.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry I went a little bit over with that last question, but thank you very much for applying.
Thank you, Nancy.
And we'll be making the decision on the tenth of November.
Okay, thanks.
And our next person.
Everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Harris? These are going fast, I'm sorry. If you want to do a couple minutes of introduction, and then we'll, we'd like to ask you some questions.
Okay. Greetings, grab the microphone. Grab your microphone.
Hello. Greetings, Mayor Shepherd, Vice Mayor Ness, and honorable council members. My name is Matthew Harris. I am a experienced architect. I have approximately twenty-five years of professional experience. I'm a licensed architect in California. I have worked in, in commercial and residential aspects of architecture design. I wanted to say that as public servants, I think that the projects that show a generosity of spirit in their design are the ones that really deserve our generosity in return as public servants. And so, that, I think, I just was something I was, wanted to state as just an aspect, I think, of what makes most, is sort of a thread through all of the projects that I think are successful in Palo Alto. They are, have a character of being sort of unselfish in one way or another, and kind of going beyond the confines of just their own architectural elevations, or floor plans, and kind of tying themselves into the rest of the city. I can give you an example of that, if you'd like, or, or you guys can just, you guys want to ask me some question?
Do an example.
Yeah.
Okay, I think a good example of that is the project at, let's see here, three twenty-five Channing, which is a four-story wood shingle project that's part of the Heritage Park. And I thought that, like, for example, they put, you know, some thought into making the connection between Heritage Park and Scott Park, and making that kind of, the pedestrian connection there, part of, important part of the design. So that's not really even a building necessarily, it's just like really a pathway, and I think that's probably one of the most successful, attractive things about that project.
Great.
You know, because Karen asked about that before, I'd, I'd like to hear what you have to say about Two Forty Hamilton.
I'll put your mic on.
Two Forty Hamilton, that's the.
You mentioned in your application.
Oh, did I, did I mention that in the application?
Yep, number two.
Okay, well, I think, I, I think that you, that you, you know, you can legislate architectural styles by having historical districts, and such things. I think in some ways, the climate in the city has sort of gotten a little bit too hyper-focused on the issue of styles. I think that really, a lot of what makes buildings successful projects has to do with some other things, like occupancy. I think a lot of the buildings that are more mixed-use buildings are very successful. And I think that you can draw, actually, you, you can take two very contemporary, modern buildings, that have different, that, and they're, one will, is not very successful, I don't like it, and another one, I think, is much more successful, and the really, the underlying difference is the occupancy. It's that the one contemporary, modernist building, you know, has a cafe and other retail occupancies on the ground floor, that give it a really different character.
Okay, Gail?
Thank you for applying. In your application, in one of the responses, you talk about how the ARB works to protect and help shape the architectural integrity of the city. What do you mean by architectural integrity?
Well, I think the architectural integrity is having, I, well, what I, what I would draw attention to is having a sense of the kind of image, self-image of Palo Alto and the history of the city. Some of the, some, some projects that I think are kind of interesting have this, that's what I would call an embedded past in it. There's a building, an older project, a commercial housing project, a multifamily project at six hundred Middlefield Road, it's at the corner of Hamilton and Middlefield, and has this really interesting detail, they actually sort of like completely absorbed an existing house into that project, and they, but they saved the front porch and the entry hall. And it's a really, I think, great project, because it has this kind of vestige of the former building, and it was a nice building that was there, and it really adds a lot of character to that project. So, you know, and there are other buildings that do that, there, there's another, there's one over by Heritage Park that does that, that's on the corner of Ramona and Channing, it's called Oak Court, that they integrated an existing wood frame house into the rest of the project. I think that's really a great opportunity, not, you know, that, I mean, not every project can do that, those are kind of special projects, but certainly adds a lot of character and depth to a project.
Okay, Greg?
I like your phrase generosity of design. Do you think the ARB has some discretion to suggest that full build-out, if they are, might not be the most appropriate design or style?
Hmm, well, that is, that, I think that if, I think it's kind of depends on the context a little bit, like, I think if you could make an argument that some kind of massing that did, that would not allow a full build-out was more appropriate, or something like that, then maybe that was, it would be an argument you could take.
Karen?
Yes, thank you, and I wanted to go to a couple of comments that you made here, about encouraging, promoting a fairly liberal environment for architectural expression and development within narrow, without. without narrow interpretations. As a response to the second question, the third question, you kind of repeat that, high-quality architectural design and promoting a fairly liberal environment for architectural expression and development without narrow interpretation. So you repeat it, so that seems to be something that you really focus on. So what do you mean by liberal, fairly liberal environment? And contrast that or integrate that with compatibility, which is one of the findings that has to be made by the ARB?
Well, I, you know, I, I grew up in Palo Alto and I'm kind of a boomerang of sorts. I left for 20 years and then I came back. And I actually think that Palo Alto would benefit from having additional historical districts. I think there's a lot of historic buildings in the city that are unprotected, that maybe could be protected, that would, I would like, like to see that. That's not really the specific task or mandate of the Architecture Review Board. So I, I'd like to say that I recognize that Palo Alto has a really strong historical character, and I think that that's part of the board's job to protect that and to promote it. But at the same time, I think also that Palo Alto is a city of high education levels and right next to one, a very large university, and you kind of have to, you know, I, that sort of implies that you have a sort of well-educated liberal population that is, has a certain kind of freedom to make liberal choices. And like I said before, I don't think you can, you can legislate architectural styles, but only in certain instances. I mean, just over, just across the board, you can't legislate architectural styles. That's not, that's not, that's not America, that's not democracy.
So I didn't quite get an answer though to the question and.
Did I answer your question?
Didn't seem like it.
Okay, I wasn't trying to avoid it. Maybe you could get more specific about what you want.
I'm looking for how a liberal environment for architectural expression can be applied and still satisfy the compatibility requirements that's a finding of the ARB. And so that, and that's not a question about style either, so.
Well, the.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but it's an important question to me, anyway.
Yeah, the, well, the, so when, when you say compatibility, but not in terms of style, you're, you're meaning that.
Design.
On a design level. So to me, that implies that compatibility's core meaning is something about high-quality So I don't, I don't, I don't find lib, anything about liberal being inconsistent with high-quality design necessarily. I still not, I'm still not, I mean, I, I mean, I recognize that there's this very kind of, kind of sort of tumultuous climate going on about this debate about traditionalist architecture versus modern design. Okay, I recognize that. But, and I think that really the, the key, the path, the, you know, the road to like having people feel like that the, that the Architecture Review Board is doing something that's rational is that you have to emphasize high-quality design. And that, so that, the key, the elements are the tenants of high-quality design is a very broad thing. It involves materials and amassing, occupancy, I was, I brought occupancy out as a key issue.
Okay, well, that concludes our time. So thank you very much for the application, and once again, we'll be making decisions on the 10th of November.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to talk with me.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Our next applicant is Richard Shulman. Welcome.
Welcome.
You know the drill.
Yes. My name is Richard Shulerman. I am a 12-year resident of Palo Alto. I currently work as a residential realtor. I've been a licensed architect for the past 31 years, general contractor for 25 years. I have developed several residential properties here in Palo Alto and Menlo Park. There was a recent article in the Palo Alto Weekly titled "Style Wars." It primarily highlighted the angst of the Palo Alto residents towards the Architecture Review Board and the city in general. As a local realtor, architect, developer, and contractor, I would hope to be able to navigate a middle ground, a balance between the concerns of the public and the desires of the property owners who want to redevelop their property. And I am open for questions.
Okay, there you go. Anybody? Karen?
Somebody else throw their hands up first. So I noticed a few things here. It's like, appreciate your background and you seem to have a diverse taste in the kinds of buildings that you like and appreciate your comments about harmonious streetscape throughout the city. And so streetscape, if you can talk about that just briefly and then otherwise, in the response to the second question, you say buildings ranging in height from two to six stories. And we have a 50-foot height limit, so tell me what your thoughts are about that as well as your streetscape comments.
Probably the best examples, just to look at the Alma Village and also the 801 Alma as far as being walls right up to the sidewalk. So the streetscape, one of the examples I used was 245 Litten, in which it is done well as far as massing and scale. It's a three-story building, so you have two, two-story masses that come up to the build-two line, a narrow sidewalk. And then as you get to the three-story portion, it is set back and you have a wider sidewalk. So you have narrow sidewalk, two-story, wider sidewalk, three-story. So that allows for a great pedestrian experience in human scale, great colors and textures. And then it's, it provides for the streetscape and also at the 400 Hamilton, the building is set back from the build-two lines and has some nice planters and use some negative space to create some pedestrian excitement as you walk around the buildings. And there's quite a few of those others in the city that have done well for creating something other than the Alma Village and the 801 Alma walls up to the sidewalk.
Then just quickly, your comment about two-to-six story buildings?
That was just a reference to two-to-six. I know that there's a 50-foot limit, so pretty much are four stories would be the height.
Well, since you brought it up, I'd like to ask you, you've read the article about the review of the Architecture Review Board. What do you think could be improved or do you have any opinions about that, how we process that now? What was your takeaway from the article?
I think the largest thing that I took away from the article is that because some of the rules have changed in the PTC about the build-two lines and moving buildings up to the sidewalk, unintended results are, we get these big walls versus the better-massed pedestrian scale-type buildings. And so I think that's more the issue as opposed to attacking the ARB. And where the ARB is working on the compatibility, you know, the quality and the scale of buildings, it's just, there seems to be a pushback from these kinds of buildings and more consideration to, as mentioned many times, the glass box, so that you're just not building a square box on a site, but have some scale, massing proportions, articulations to create some nice pedestrian walkways.
Okay, thank you.
Ready? Okay, Liz? So one of the areas that you've mentioned is, going through it, and we're, what's, you're talking about what it is, you're talking about compatibility in the ARB. And in here, you mentioned mixed use. And mixed use is one of those constant terms that is used, and we have a very hard time ever getting to mixed use. So tell me why you included it. And as you said, it's near the end of a cycle with commercial properties, but as long as I've been in politics, I've heard people say, we really need mixed use.
Well, I think one of the things, this goes over to the PTC, so it's really not an issue for the ARB, but that's a concern for me that we should, when we're doing our zoning in the downtown area and other commercial areas, we should start allowing some more of the residential development in there, along with office and retails on the first floor, so that you can create more of the livability of a city. Like the property at 268 Homer, there at Bryant and Homer, has a couple residential units on top of it, plus the office space. That also has been done very well, of setting part of the three-story building back, creating a nice entrance and so forth. That's creating livability for our downtown space. So as the buildings get older and it's time to redevelop, let's see if we can incorporate some of those livability issues in our town.
Thanks. Thank you. And Mark?
Have you done much international travel?
I have done some, yes.
Is there, could you let us know about, have you visited a city where you've been walking around? Folks, I tend to do more walking around when I travel internationally than I do locally, where you've been walking around and you thought, you know what, I really like the architecture of this town.
Paris.
Paris. That's an easy answer.
That's the one we all like.
Which a buddy of mine was just telling me about his trip this morning. Well, I'm trying to figure out how I can go deeper and make that more challenging.
Well, just, just in responding here for the six-story in Paris, you have these six-story structures with a manched roof that's two stories, but a four-story, so the proportion and the scale is great because you also have the wide boulevards. But then you go down to the little tiny walkways, you see a crack between these two buildings. So you want to explore. You start walking in there and you find some of the most fabulous little restaurants, boutiques, and so forth as you go through there, creating great residential or pedestrian spaces in there, which could be very easily done and is done here in Palo Alto as well.
Greg, thanks.
Gail?
Thank you for applying. You mentioned context-based analysis, and you talk about ensuring that new buildings do not overpower existing development. Can you make some observations about how that can be achieved?
I would refer back to, like the project at 245 Litten, in that several of the proposals that are coming up have been criticized as the big black glass box where it's four walls up to the build outline, where as if a little more massing changes so that you go from a two to a three to four, create some recessed areas for a nice park that could still be overbuilt by the building, but creating something that's more than just a blank wall on a sidewalk.
Okay, well, I think you've got still another minute, and so I have another question, if you don't mind. I wanted to see if you could explain a little bit, your thinking here with urban design addresses the character and quality of the built environment in relation to the human scale. Human scale is really important to me, so I just wanted to get your essence here in the downtown area, what.
Well, if you think of the Three Seasons Restaurant, that little plaza that is divided in four, that is a sorely underused city asset that could be greatly enhanced to draw people in there as a public benefit more than what it is right now, it's just taken over by the restaurant. There could be other things to draw people into that. And there's other little spots around town like that that could be greatly enhanced for the urban living here.
Nice, okay, sure.
Enhanced how?
Well, right next to it is the candy store. What if the candy store were allowed to have a little vending kiosk there that sells their colas and their candies, and you put out some chairs and umbrellas for that? There's also the other restaurants that kind of back up to that corridor, if maybe the backside of that's enhanced a little bit more for outdoor dining as a secondary spot for parties or whatever.
Okay, well, you've got 30 seconds if you'd like to make a pitch for anything?
I would just like to say, in closing, as a Palo Alto resident, I would very much like to be on the ARB. Thank you.
Good ask. Okay, thank you very much. Our next interview is with Flor Schmidt, which is no relation to Arschmit, so.
God, it's still different.
Little bit, really different, yeah. Welcome. And if you want to take just a minute or two to introduce yourself and why you want to be on the ARB, and then we can jump right into questions.
Can I just grab that microphone?
Yeah, hold the mic up, yeah.
There you go.
So I'm a French, I'm architect, and I run in 20 architects, architecture firms in France, in Paris, over 20 years. And we were focusing on health, transportation, education, housing, social housing, and a lot of other topics and planning too. And I follow my husband here, who tried to make solar and buildings, and intelligent buildings happen. So I, I was interested, and if I can serve the community in any way, I, if I can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Could we ask right up, why don't, why don't we look like Paris?
Yeah.
As Mark said earlier. How can we get to look like Paris?
Yes, yes, Paris, it's a beautiful city. But you know, France is not so easy country, and France stopped solar system, they stopped, they do radioactive glow. So we start in 2006 in France and in the solar way with new patents and new, the new ideas on integration solar in the architecture. And in 2010, government just deny, not deny, but stopped, stopped everything. So what, so we came here in America and to, and it was an idea to come, to come here, to come here, but we come, we came here first.
Thanks. Greg?
I see in your background, you have spent time on housing, social housing projects in a number of French cities.
Mm-hmm.
One of the characteristics of Paris and France is that the center city remained middle class and the social housing ended up outside. Can you talk a little bit about the housing you did in Orleans? Was it center-city housing or was it outside the central zone? And how do you see that would apply to a community like Palo Alto?
Okay, it was in middle towns in, around Paris, not, a little bit far of Paris because it's Orleans and Nantes, and, and this is provincial cities, but real cities. And we have met some project with, one, one of the projects was in Orleans was really interesting one because the land, the lot they give us was so difficult, and it was just for young people to, help young people to reintegrate to society. So it was a new, a new program in France and.
Inside the center city or was it on the center?
No, it's, it's not the old center city. It's not the suburb. It's, you know, the cities in France are expand. And so it was really urban, urban, in an urban way, but we, we are fine in the project the way to, to find some interior spaces and places, and so it was a little, the two projects were a little town in the town, in fact, because there is a lot of, part of, we compose the project from a lot of different. there is a lot of, part of, we compose the project from a lot of different, what we like to do, what I love to do, is to work with the land, and so the land inspire me a lot, and the relationship and the architecture and the land, and because this is, makes sense, and can really makes people feeling well in the, everywhere in the city. So I really believe architecture, it's a fundamental skill.
Karen?
Yes, you've provided a link here to see some of your work, and so use some words like, what can I expect to see when I get there? Am I going to see projects that are bold, integrated, approachable? Give me some adjectives of what I can expect to see when I go look at your work.
I think you can see it's well, well, design it's two meanings, but well drawing, well, and the drawing express a strong idea. And the drawing, the design, express something strong, something, what we know about architecture, it's, you need to work a lot, a lot on a project to express clearly the main idea, or the main ideas. And so this is a lot of work in a short, intensive time. And I know it's, that's why I'm here tonight, because I know if I can help to find the better expression of a project, or to, to help the applicant, the architect, or the person who submit a project, to help to see what is the, because it's very difficult when you are, yourself on a project, you need a lot of practice to, to find the way to express in the best way everything. And so this I, I practice, and I think you need time of practice to, to know how to do that. And I think I can help with an upper view, if, I don't know if the expression is correct, but view from the top to just extract what makes sense and what is fundamental. And I'm not interested by discussing first colors and testes. I want to discuss the, really, how does it design on the land, and what does it mean? What does it mean?
Okay, well, you've got 30 seconds if you want to say anything.
No, yes, I just want to say how I love this, and how I saw, so we have to redo a lot of projects in France from, there was a lot of mistakes in the 60s. And when I see that here, I know California is growing up, and people is coming, so I see a lot of projects in the areas, and I think I can have to go, maybe to, not to go too quickly, and to, don't forget the fundamentals, thanks.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for applying. Very nice.
Thank you.
And our next interview will be with Kew Young Kim. Welcome. I hope I pronounced your first name correctly.
Q, like a letter Q.
Oh, we should spell. Thank you. If you'd like to take a couple minutes just to introduce yourself, and why you want to be on the Architectural Review Board.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd. Hello, good evening. My name is Kew Kim. I'm a longtime Palo Alto resident, grew up in Palo Alto area, very similar educational course in Palo Alto, similar to Councilmember Berman, Palo Alto High School graduate with Mayor Shepherd's daughter.
Okay.
And I'm a...
Calm down, boy.
I am.
Which one?
And a school of architecture graduate from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. In 2008, upon graduation, I spent some time abroad in Calif, or not California, in Korea, trying to kind of rediscover my roots and cultural heritage. I was also fortunate enough to have a short stay in France, in Paris, and moved back to Palo Alto in 2011, and have since lived here in the same house that I grew up in, and I love my city. I feel that as a practicing design professional and soon-to-be architect, you know, giving back to the city is very important, and I feel that as a somewhat younger architectural professional, that my views and kind of my input would be of some significant benefit to the Architectural Review Board. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and I'll open up for questions.
So you're indicating you're not licensed as yet, am I correct?
That's correct.
And you're on that path, I presume?
Yes, I am. I finished my internship hours, and if you're familiar with the process of being, becoming licensed as an architect, it's quite long. In addition to the internship hours, there are several different exams that have to be passed, and I'm about halfway past through the exams, and hope to finish my examinations by the end of next year and become licensed.
So are you particularly interested in heading toward residential or commercial, and why?
I don't think I have a preference either way. I think, you know, as an architectural professional, I'm open to all architecture. You know, just because something's residential or something's commercial doesn't discount it as less architecture. And I think just the education, and my background and where I've lived, and those things really helped me to see architecture as a whole, whether it's residential or commercial, in a way that, you know, I know what is, you know, quote-unquote, "good" architecture.
And what is good architecture?
There are several aspects and components to good architecture, and of course, a lot of it is personal preference, but I feel that there are a lot of things based on the human scale, on a human body level, that really make architecture good and approachable and aesthetically pleasing, and, you know, to a nice scale of architecture and the way that a building presents itself to the public.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mark?
Well, Q, I'm amazed that you've made anything of your life going to these Palo Alto schools you went to. But I was wondering if you could maybe talk to us a little bit, another applicant mentioned in their application about how the building lifecycle of a lot of buildings in Palo Alto are kind of coming to their, to their end. And one of the challenges I think, I know I'm struggling with as a council member, is how do, you know, how do we build new buildings in Palo Alto that, you know, appeal to both our generation, and, you know, and for a building that's going to be there for the next 50 or 60 years, but doesn't shock the senses of folks who have different architectural styles? So, you know, maybe you could talk a little bit about how you can, you know, walk that line as a member of the ARB?
I think it's a very difficult line, and if it were clearly defined, then, you know, there wouldn't be as many architectural issues as there are in the city of Palo Alto. But I think a lot of it boils down to, again, the human scale, and really designing a building, even if it's modern, that's something that people can relate to, whether they're the openings on the street facade, or whether it's the height of certain floor stories. I think those, you know, all have to really play an important part into the design of a building, whether it's a more traditional-looking building, or a more modern building. And those are the things that really aren't necessarily that easy to pick up on just by looking at a building at first glance, but I think the more that you spend time around buildings, which I love to do, you know, walk around Palo Alto and experience different buildings, I think you get a sense of, you know, why you feel a certain building feels good to you, and why you like a certain building. And a lot of that, again, comes down to the human scale, whether, you know, it's all different senses, and, you know, how friendly a building can make itself to the public.
Thanks.
Gail?
Thank you for applying. Can you discuss your views of the issue of compatibility, and how do you integrate issues related to architectural design and diversity in architecture and form? Is that important? What are the challenges? And what are your comments about those concepts?
So I think, you know, of course, the times have changed, and kind of connecting back to Councilmember Berman's question, and about the end of a building cycle, and new buildings having to be constructed. I think, you know, in order to have a building, or buildings that kind of fit in with the rest of Palo Alto, a lot of those things that you've mentioned come into play. So whether, you know, certain floor levels begin to line up at an elevational level, or whether, you know, the overall massing of a building matches somewhat to its surroundings. And I think a big part of it is not necessarily having just the cookie-cutter answer, but really being able to blend in with the rest of the neighborhood, and making itself tie in as a new building, but also to become a building that will become an older building, and really continue to keep that heritage of architectural tradition alive.
Do you think there's a role for bold or bolder architecture in the city of Palo Alto?
I think there definitely are opportunities to do that, and I think some of those opportunities, actually, all of the opportunities are very site-specific. There are certain sites in Palo Alto that are more sensitive and more rooted in its traditional heritage, and some other sites in Palo Alto that are maybe more up and coming, or changing a lot, or even have come into Palo Alto's city as a whole more recently of late. So I think there definitely are opportunities, but again, it's very site-specific.
Greg?
I think my question...
Okay, I'm going to ask you this one. Bring in a younger point of view. So, what is a younger point of view?
Well...
Talk to me a little.
As far as I know, I don't believe there has been a member of the Architectural Review Board as young as myself. I will not reveal my age here, but you may ask me afterwards.
I have it hinted at what it is, yeah. Yeah.
Yes?
I know when I gave birth the last time, so.
And I think it's important, because I think a lot of the newer population into Palo Alto actually is from a younger generation, a generation that mainly have engineers, but of people that are trying to move into Palo Alto, or very unsuccessfully not able to move into Palo Alto. But I think there is that presence, at least the working presence of people. And I think that myself, having grown up in Palo Alto, and still being able to relate to those younger people because of the same generation level, I would be able to offer some ideas and thoughts, and contribute kind of my two cents with those backgrounds.
Okay, and so what is it that you sort of have your eyes set on for, like, what would you bring into the role of looking at the buildings, then, when we're, when somebody comes and brings a building that looks like it's been made out of Legos? How, what is it that you're maybe looking towards changing it into for? Because I get you, you know, you have my daughter's generation, so it is different eyes, and I think that that's, you know, valuable, so.
I don't know if it's necessarily unique to my age, but I would say, you know, identifying myself as a little bit younger, I am very into observing many different kinds of architecture and buildings across the internet, still traveling quite a bit. And I think those are the kinds of things that allow me to kind of have bigger eyes at looking at a building, rather than, you know, let's say, just for example, having grown up in Palo Alto and not having left Palo Alto for some reason, let's say. And I think I can identify with the younger people that, you know, I think we have similar experiences of having traveled worldwide, and maybe even being out of school a little more recently than some of the other applicants. I think there are many different things that we learn in school that are very applicable to the duties that are required for serving on the Architectural Review Board.
Karen, oh, yeah, you've got 30 seconds, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, yeah. I'm sorry, I was doing Karen, and then that'll be the last question.
So, yeah, following up on that, for me, what, and I appreciate Nancy's question, it's like, what I'm trying to tease out, though, is like, if good design is ageless, and good buildings stand the test of time, what difference should it make what age you are? And so what are you going to bring? I'm trying to find out what you're going to bring in terms of a design sense to the city.
Sure. I think, you know, there are many different extents of that, but I think even amongst design professionals, I think there are older design professionals that might think, you know, the agelessness of an architectural structure is one thing, while as maybe some younger generation of designers have learned otherwise, and have kind of their own input as to what, you know, ageless architecture is. And quite frankly, I think the younger generation is going to live out the test of time a little bit longer in that lifecycle, and I think that being of the younger generation, any new buildings that are built with the younger generation's input, those are the buildings that are going to last. And those are the buildings that, you know, really need the, the people that are going to use it, need to be able to bring their own input into those buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Q, and thank you very much for applying.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next interview is with Catherine Valentine. We've got a speaker? Okay.
We're ahead of schedule.
No, we're on schedule. Seven o'clock, oh, yeah, you can't look at that.
No, I'm getting all relaxed.
No, no.
Hot seat, so...
Seven oh six.
You can move closer if you want, someone's having to push it back.
Yeah.
That's been like that for the last 24 hours, or two months, or something.
It's Alice in Wonderland time.
Oh, it's a trick. Oh, I'm all relaxed.
Good, good. So go ahead and relax into an introduction for a minute or two, and then we'll ask you some questions.
So I think you have a mammoth task. You only have 10 minutes to kind of assess my color and my shading, so I'm going to try and give you a clear picture by telling you of my roots, my shoots, and then why I'm here in front of you. So I am the third of eight very highly opinionated children. I learned very early on the benefits of being able to navigate controversy and lengthy expressions of heated opinion. Although I can boast that I have an Ivy League education in engineering, and I have a mindset of a dweeb, and I've lived the life of what I call the wealthy poor in Palo Alto for a long time. It wasn't always so. As a child, I knew poverty, and knew of its seemingly insurmountable limitations. So this has informed both my worldview and my practice in my landscape design, that the best design oftentimes comes out of constraint. Second, my shoots, so my offshoots. I am your classic woodworker Palo Alton. I like the safety of the woodwork. I will read all the local papers. I even read the letters, I look at the authors, I am sometimes guilty of creeping them out online to try and understand what is their backstory, what is informing the reason why they're expressing this opinion. But I, you don't, I take long walks at dawn to try and restrain this impulse that I have to learn the lay of the land, and look at everyone's landscapes. But I don't go to council meetings, I watch them online. I also never stop on the sidewalk during the farmer's market to talk to my civic leaders. And rarely do I ever get my feathers ruffled enough to write a letter to an editor, but, you know, why am I here? I think each of us has some nugget that draws us out of the woodwork. And for me, I, it's the supposition that Palo Alto may well be at a tipping point right now. And the nudge, perhaps naive, that I, maybe it's time for me to come out of the woodwork and see if there's some contribution I can make that matches my skill set.
Great, thank you. Gail?
Thank you, I appreciated your packet, the quotes and the images that you've provided. Why is landscape design critical to the overall issues related to the built environment, and the site, and the planning, the overall kind of context? And what drew you to the design work, the landscape design work you're interested in?
Oh, gosh, we only have 10 minutes. Okay, I'm going to try and nuggetize my answer. So several, several things, so if I... So if, I wish I could show you images of construction sites and naked buildings and then buildings with landscape design. And that would be your answer to your question. Landscape design can really make or break a building. For example, one of my images in that packet is 316 Ames. 316 Ames is a very contemporary home. It's one home that's in my neighborhood and I ride by it often on my bicycle. One day I happened to be riding by it and I saw them, this, this home that had done well with a corner lot and its siding, its massing, its scale was really well done considering its constraints. And I saw them putting in the worst imaginable landscape. I mean, it was really, really bad and they had no, it was clear from a glance, in 30 seconds you could see they had no idea what they were doing. So I stopped my bike and I, just on a whim, went up and started talking to the guy, you know, who's your boss? And he was, happened to be there and I said, you know, do you want some help? Because this is really bad. And to his credit, you know, he was Latino, he had no machismo and he let me help him. And the landscape that you see there was a pro bono, here's what you need to do. You need to return all these plants, you need to get these plants. And it was just, you know, 45 minutes one day, 45 minutes the next day, 45 minutes the next day. And then that house was on the Palo Alto Weekly cover of the fall real estate section last year or something. So that's an example. Did I answer your question?
Yes, partially. And what drew you to this work? Maybe, why are you driven by commitment to landscape design?
I have a problem of having my hobbies turn into bigger things. So when my colleagues were going out partying, I was reading, you know, the Western Garden Book by Sunset at night. And so it just sort of grew and grew and grew and then I decided, well, I should probably get some formal training. And so I went to Foothill and then these kids are going out calling themselves landscape designers and I, and I didn't, and I thought I didn't know anything. And then I thought, okay, if you're calling yourself a landscape designer, then I can certainly bear that title.
Karen? So I appreciate all the examples you've provided here and, well, Daniel Burnham is one of my favorites. What I really like is your comment underneath, it's like the distinctive triangle shape allows the building to fill the space located at the intersection. And to me, it's not just the building, it's also how, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but how you might look at landscape is like, and so when you're applying this to buildings, I had to ask this question. What's the difference between tucking a building in and a building shoving its way into a site? And I think landscape has a lot to do with that, but it also has to do with site planning, which you also referenced in your application. So it's kind of a broad ranging question, but have I said enough that you cannot possibly respond?
Can you, can you keep talking and let me see if I can tease out the meat here and answer you appropriately?
So basically, it has to do with context again. It's like, how do you get a building, whether it has to do with landscape, or landscape is a part of that, how do you get a building to appear that it is tucking itself into a site and being compatible as opposed to, I think what the public may be responding to is buildings look like they've shoved their way into the, into the neighborhood.
Yeah, so, you know, Palo Alto has its five, you know, ugly buildings that everyone likes to hold up about, you know, these are mistakes. And, you know, I don't know if I would go, I think I would call them mistakes as well. But, but I also thought, you know, what would happen to the amount of stuff that came through to the Architectural Review Board if every applicant was handed a little piece of paper that says, please show how this works with a comprehensive plan? And then a link, and then they get to go to the comprehensive plan and show that they're meeting the guidelines of the comprehensive plan. I think a lot of the mistakes that we hold up as ugly architecture in Palo Alto could easily have been avoided if there had been reference and adherence to the comp plan. You know, there's a good example, that, that Indian Museum in Canada that has that earth pounded wall. You know, for me, really good, there's, you know, iconic architecture that screams, you know, look at me, and there's 801 Alma that when you look at it from the Alma side, the architect has made the nice wavy wall to try and offset the fact that it's not pedestrian friendly. But it also says, you know, this is architecture that you want to look at and say, ooh, what architect did that building versus this Indian museum with its rammed earth wall that just whispers, you know, it whispers, come and see. And for me, good architecture is stuff that whispers, come and see, and doesn't, you know, scream, hey, you know, I'm making a statement.
What are the hardest aspects of design, scale, compatibility, whatever that may be? Is that we can all look at buildings, some of the Frank Lloyd Wrights, particularly the one on Stanford campus was ridiculed when it was put in, which you probably know. How does, and I remember once saying to a former planning director, that is the most unattractive house I've ever seen. And he said, someone designed it, someone loves it. Many of us see things through very different eyes and architecture is one of those. So say more about seeing it through the eye of the beholder. Oddly, 801 Alma has actually won some awards, which I know no one believes, but they have.
So this is like the stylistic hornet's nest, you know, how do you dictate style? You know, you really can't. And so this is why the robustness of the things that tie the hands of the ARB are so important. The policies that the ARB has to operate under are so critical to their effectiveness. This is why I was referencing the core comprehensive plan. But I think to your point, I respect different points of view in style. I think compatibility is going to be always a stylistic difficulty. I would say there's no way to dictate to someone who absolutely loves their house that has 17 different stylistically contrasting elements, except to say, if you ever go to a bad website, you know that you're on a bad website.
It's a great answer, just up there, that's perfect. Thanks.
Okay, well... Thank you very much for applying. We've run out of time, but it's been good.
Thank you.
And thank you. We didn't, there's only a couple of these, is that what this was, David? Okay.
Nobody asked the question if I did every local work, but that's okay.
Do you have any local work?
I have the answer.
Yeah. Okay, and our last interview for Architectural Review Board will be Mark Weiss. Welcome. And would you like to take a couple of minutes to introduce and why you're applying?
I am thinking back to fall of 1977. I was student body president at Terman and I was also named or asked or invited to be on the school improvement program, the site council, along with Susan Riddle of my grade and David Ernst, a year behind me, and must have been one other, but I can't remember who he or she was. And there was some kind of district-wide site, school improvement program meeting that was going to be held at Coverley Campus. And I was a Terman student and a parent member of this board picked me up and maybe some of the others. And I remember being excused from campus to go over to Coverley. And it was my very first time visiting the Coverley Campus. And it was quite striking. I'd gone to Fremont Hills School in Palo Alto three years earlier and eventually, I knew the Gunn campus and the sports fields at least, tennis courts at least, and it was just quite shocking or just different. And the architecture of Coverley relative to Gunn, the use, and one thing I remember expressly is there were students smoking cigarettes as you come up past the theater to wherever we would have been meeting. And they were playing Led Zeppelin over the, over a loudspeaker and I just, I mean, and I am quite familiar with Coverley now and or, you know, years later, I got very intimate with Coverley and, but I was just, just now it flashed in my head, just the contrast, you know, in this culture, the difference between building Coverley in 60, whoever the architect was, and building, well, 50s, and building Gunn 10 or 15 years later, just the striking distinction between the two sites. And I'm a Dartmouth grad and a Gunn grad. I always throw it in there, I guess, for whatever reason.
Okay, great.
Why not, right?
We spent a lot of money on that degree, so I might as well plug it where I can.
Okay. Anybody want to kick this off?
So, Mark, you're wearing different hats at different points. I'm interested, there's been a great deal written about the ARB, as you know, a lot written about what should the role be? Should the role be different than what the role currently is? What about some of the decisions they've made? I know you read a lot, I know you must have been reading that. Why don't you comment on some of the, both press comments, some of the comments you've heard us make, and perhaps even some of the ones you've heard the ARB talk about?
Well, to contextualize your comment, I mean, I went to a liberal arts college and I was an English major and I think we are trained to wear a lot of hats and to constantly be ready to shift hats at a moment's notice. And I am not an architect. I think by trade, on my tax returns, I say I am a concert promoter and artist manager. And this board is comprised of five people, of which three of whom are supposed to be architects or design professionals. And I am claiming in my application that I could be considered for either of the at-large seat or the, or the architecture or design professional in that in my work as a event producer, I design events, similar to the way I've heard Councilmember Holman discuss about her design background, colors, her policy instincts, and likewise, Gail Price, I believe, has said several times about having an art or design background, which I think, having watched her at school board and council, colors some of her input. So I'm saying you can consider me as a design professional for the purposes of this. And I actually think, quite frankly, that architects per se are overrepresented on our Architectural Review Board and potentially that is part of our malaise. I do think there is kind of a malaise with due respect to some of the architects in this room. And people are pretty frustrated. I've written about it as well as read about it. I've gone to a lot of meetings lately. I think I've spoken at least 10 times the last six months in specific projects. Did that answer your question?
Awesome. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you for asking.
Greg? Yeah?
The Architectural Review Board has certain mandates. Do you think that mandate is, would be influential enough to have an impact on design in the city as you perceive it?
I don't think I understand your question. Do you mind rephrasing that? Or be more specific?
Under the rules and procedures and mandate of the Architectural Review Board, we've heard from a number of people tonight that there are limited purview over what they can suggest to applicants. Do you think those limitations would allow you to achieve the goals that you've articulated?
Well, it's definitely true that sometimes people are raising questions about use per se versus architecture per se, or something that would be a planning commission matter or a council matter versus ARB per se. I am suggesting that I think we just need a broader context in our process of how we apply our code or our comprehensive plan or our, our policies. I made a brief reference, I'm not an expert on it, I could bone up on it, given me a little bit, if you give me a little time. I made reference to Title 16 and Title 18 of our municipal code and whether there were 48 rules under one and 36 under the other out of 62, or I counted, I literally counted versus, you know, something like 16.62. There weren't 62 ordinances, maybe there were at one point, but it was closer to 40. But, I mean, I studied government as well as I read English and, I mean, I think I could get up to speed. I would be, it would take, there would be a learning curve if I was actually on the ARB vetting projects. And, but I think I'm capable of, of being able to read and critique and apply our policy to our current and upcoming projects. I'm not claiming I could design a house or anything like that.
Karen?
So, the ARB has findings it needs to make and there's like the comp plan and there are zoning, there's the zoning code, any number of things. So is it a healthy tension that's created by those constraints from a, from a creative perspective or are they just constraints?
Well, I think a huger force is the pure economics of our community, for better or for worse. I mean, I think there's huge pressure to optimize people's investment in our community and more often it's people trying to rationalize, you know, being upzoned or being policies applied in their favor in terms of building out bigger and bolder. I, I think that's a bigger problem. Did I mention I'm running for city council?
So how do you see that, that tension married with the constraints that we do have? What would you do with that on the ARB?
I work with creative people as a living. I don't think tension is a good thing for creative people. I think calmness, harmony. A pressure cooker's not a good thing. I mean, people are a little bit frustrated, yeah, people are frustrated. I'm kind of dancing around your question. If there's something more specific, I'm not getting it.
I was really just speaking about the creative tension, not, not stress.
I mean, we, we have probably some of the most talented people in the world in every field. In design, we have very talented architects and designers and landscape architects and real estate agents and builders and craftsmen. We have wonderfully talented people. There, I think there's something wrong and I'm not sure what the nidus of the problem is, but I think we, with due respect, we could try something slightly different.
Well, Mark, you've got a minute. Would you like to summarize your interest on getting onto the ARB?
Well, because you asked several other people about their favorite building and I actually am kind of intrigued by the mosque. And I took a tour of the mosque when it was, I want to say, three fourths completed at San Antonio Road, very close to the freeway. A worker let us in and I was intrigued by it. I'm not sure if I will be able to enjoy much use of that facility as a community member. I'm not exactly sure. It's a very specific type of building, but I have a lot of respect for the fact that we're going to have something like that and I think it'll make Palo Alto proud. Just yesterday or two days ago, I took a picture kind of through the window. I held up my little snap phone and kind of, kind of shot a picture. I haven't published it yet, but I've probably published 500, well, okay, 100 pictures of architecture or public art on my blog, Plastic Alto. I hope you had the chance to read my somewhat creative response to your four prompts in that I wrote 2,300 words, kind of about architecture and kind of about this process. I'm a postmodernist, which means I, I don't know, speaking shorthand sometimes and longhand other times and leave gaps. And Michael Alcheck thought I was a rapper based on something I read when I applied for another board previously. I'm not a rapper, but Cornell West, I saw him at, speak at Stanford once and he was talking super fast, talking in code and riffing and rhyming and a little old lady raised her hand and said, could you please speak more slowly? I'm sorry if I speak fast sometimes, but I have, I've had a lot of, I've really grown and appreciated the opportunity to try to engage in civic engagement the last few years and I hope to keep doing it, either on ARB or on council or just a guy getting his three minutes whenever he can.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you and we're going to be making appointments after the election because you are a candidate. So, thank you very much. That concludes the Architectural Review Board, but we have one speaker and that is Lee Lippert. And I'm going to give you three minutes.
Mayor Shepard, Vice Mayor Niss and distinguished city council members. You all know me, I'm Lee Lippert, I'm on the Architectural Review Board. This is coming down to the wire and I'm about to retire from the board. I promised three years ago when I was appointed that this would be my retirement and that I'd be stepping down and completing my term and going back to becoming Citizen Lippert again. I just want to thank you very much for the opportunity to serve on the Palo Alto Architectural Review Board as well as on the Planning and Transportation Commission. It's really been a wonderful experience for me and I've really enjoyed myself and hopefully I've contributed a lot to this community. I know as of late, there has been a lot of controversy in the newspapers about the Architectural Review Board. This is about probably one of the most important appointments you'll be making. It really is important that you know, understand and have faith and confidence in these people that you are applying, that you are going to be appointing. that you are applying, that you are going to be appointing. It involves a tremendous time commitment. It really involves setting aside some of your own personal life to be able to do this. I don't need to tell you what is involved in the City Council. What we do is a fraction of what you do. But these boards do the heavy lifting for you. They do have the public hearing, they do solicit the public comments, they do take the slings and arrows, as well as compliments. But lately, the compliments from the City Council haven't been forthcoming, and it's really very sad. You know, when I first joined the Architectural Review Board back in 97, City Council members would come up to me, and they would thank me for my public service, whether they appointed me or not. They would thank me. And I would go, "Oh, you know, it's no, 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 it's nothing, it's nothing." And as I've gone through the years of being on the Planning and Transportation Commission, as well as the ARB, the thanks have been coming fewer and fewer and fewer. And I speak for myself, as well as the other members of the Architectural Review Board, as well as other boards and commission members, they can never hear enough thanks from you. And it's incumbent upon you, whether you appoint them or not, to thank them, because they are doing the work for you. Thank you very much. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the city.
Thank you, and thank you all for applying. Everybody's stayed with us all the way through. We have, let's see, we are 10, 12 minutes late, but we have a slip-in applicant because he cannot come to the regular planning and transportation interviews. So we are going to interview James Schmidt for planning and transportation. And he spells your name funny, too, Greg, so. And this is for 15 minutes, James. And I'm going to go ahead and give you a few minutes to do your introductions and tell us why you want to be on this board, and then we'll go ahead and do questions and answers. First off, we probably have to find the applicant. It's at the very end. It's the last one for me. But here, here's one. James Schmidt. This one, okay, got it. So, we're good. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. It has seemed to me, after living in Palo Alto since 1981, that there are some matters with respect to land use and transportation that I feel I could make some contribution to, having worked on the Coverley Advisory Committee, and before that, on the Infrastructure Task Force, and specifically, the so-called Surface Subcommittee. But I will also say, I bring to this assignment, should I have it, not the background of an architect, not the background of a Realtor, but the background of a longtime citizen and neighbor.
Does anybody want to kick this off? Karen?
So, Planning Commission, and as Lee mentioned, ARB are two of the most critical, they're all critical, because they're so helpful in vetting issues. What do you see the Planning Commission's role in relation to initiating things as opposed to being responsive to issues? So, in other words, if you see an issue coming down the pike, or something you just think needs to be done, so that it doesn't become an issue later, how do you see the Planning Commission's role in that frame of things versus being responsive to development trends, that sort of thing?
Well, it seems to me that it's insufficient for the Commission to be entirely a reactive body. Now, what is it that it might take the initiative on may depend upon what is triggered by the proposals that are brought forward to it. I could envision, speaking hypothetically for the moment, a debate about height limit. And it's clearly the case that there have been public meetings and others having to do with parking. So I think the anticipatory capability of the Planning and Transportation Commission may more often than not be triggered by ripple effects from proposals that are brought to it through the normal processes.
Gail?
Thank you for replying. Since you don't have a background in planning and transportation issues, and many applicants do not, how do you inform yourself about planning issues, either at the local level or regional level, transportation issues, trends in either of those disciplines, so that you are more well-grounded as you look at items before you?
Well, that's a difficult question. I guess I would start by saying that what I do do is to pay attention to the council's business, and I read two newspapers every day, and, actually, four, and try to keep track of what's going on locally. With respect to things going on in the so-called planning professions, that's a body of literature that I am aware of, but not familiar with.
Greg?
Earlier this evening, we had a little discussion about France dealing with housing and planning. And the point was made that you can effectively deal with it if you have a large enough piece of land, where you can think not just of the housing, but of the surroundings to it, open spaces, mixed use, residential options and connections. You mentioned that a lot of the PTC's work is responding to applications, single lot applications. Is there anything the PTC can do, the council can do, we could do together in the comprehensive plan, that might change that perception a little bit? The sort of passive responding to applications as opposed to planning?
Well, it seems to me that the Planned Community concept is a good example of the Commission trying to deal in an active way with the generalizable issue of changing zoning. I've lived in many states, five or six, and in no state that I can think of, no city that I can think of, has zoning been forever. So there has had to be some mechanism devised by the communities in which I lived, upstate New York, Flint, Michigan, wherever, Austin, Texas, there has had to be a mechanism devised by them for dealing with zoning changes. Under the umbrella of zoning changes, I would include zoning exceptions, but also changes, just plain changes. I bear no brief for the PC zoning, and sat with interest through your discussion of it on Monday night. I wish I had something that I could urge upon you as a fix for that. But I guess I would urge you to think about, okay, in the general case, we have to have a mechanism for changing zoning when the circumstances warrant changes. Now, maybe the Planned Community development is not the best possible mechanism for that, and maybe something else would be better. Although I noted that one of your members thought it was broken beyond repair, and the rest of you seem to sound like, well, let's mend it, not end it. Okay. But the general case remains that some mechanism needs to be in place for accommodating the inevitable changes that will occur with respect to neighborhoods, land use, and other things. And if the PC zoning mechanism isn't it, uppercase, then something else has to be come up with.
Mark?
Could you see it, Jim?
Hi, Mark.
You mentioned the Surface Committee of the IBRK, and I can attest firsthand at what a good chair you were, as I enjoyed serving on it with you.
Thank you.
You also mentioned in your previous answer how there are sometimes exemptions, or at least people apply for exemptions to the code, and that can be a difficult thing for us, and sometimes we might have to weigh, and sometimes an exemption is just a bad thing, and it's easy to oppose it. Sometimes, you know, you might think that, for instance, exceeding the 50-foot height limit in a way that doesn't affect, you know, people on the street. I'll try to be a little more specific. For me personally, my opinion of the project at El Camino at the We Fix Max site, they asked for exceeding the 50-foot height limit by, I think, four or five feet, but very set back off the street, so that if you're on the street, that wouldn't impact you. And the trade-off was, that meant that the massing on the street wouldn't be as, you know, it wouldn't have as much of an impact on pedestrians or folks driving by. You know, exemptions have gotten, become a bit of a scarlet letter, I think, in Palo Alto of late. What's your opinion of, you know, are there times when exemptions are appropriate versus, you know, obviously, there'll be times when they aren't?
Well, I don't know about the specific case that you mentioned, although I do have some opinions about no sidewalks. But you didn't ask about that.
But you can tell me about it.
Just as I've argued that, at the general level, there has to be a mechanism for accommodating zoning changes. It's inconceivable to me that a community could go on for any period of time without dealing with a plausible need to make a change of some kind in zoning. It seems to me that that is, that general line of thinking also applies to exemptions. It's not conceivable to me that a period of time would go by when there would not be requests for exemptions. Now, as your discussion of the PC zoning brought forward very clearly, in that context, the argument is about, so what's the public benefit? What are the public benefits? Do we proactively define them in advance, so that people know what they might have to put on the table, or do we react? Well, I think that in the case of exemptions, it's hard to know in advance what exemptions are going to come before a Planning Commission. Unless somebody tips their hat in advance, you know, you're going to see things that you might not have expected. And it seems to me that one of the things that I find frustrating is a process that seems to seek forever, but put more kindly, for an over-long period of time, what is currently characterized as a win-win situation. At the end of the day, a request for an exemption gets a yay or an a, and life goes on.
Okay, well, I'll jump in here. You have put down here the interest, the particular interest that came to the Commission recently, which was residential parking and ABAG housing targets. Do you have any thinking about your perspective on those two items?
I think that with respect to residential parking, at least in the multi-unit complexes in the near neighborhood to downtown, most of those, including the one that I'm the president of, were designed in the late '70s, maybe some of them in the early '80s. I'd have to go through a bunch of paper to get specific dates. But they were clearly designed in the context of a different sociological context for families or just couples. There is no one in our complex of 19 units that has one vehicle. There is but two units in our complex, except for two, 17, have only one space. The consequence of that is going to be hunting for parking. And the farther away they capture parking from where they live, the higher the annoyance level is going to rise, especially as they observe over time that the parking during the day is occupied by downtown employees of one kind and another. So I think that a residential permit parking program is a good thing, and I think not having one would be a bad thing. The devil is, of course, in the details, but I think, from the meetings that I'm aware of, and the work that Jaime and his staff have, Jaime and his staff have done, I think they're pointing toward what seems to me to be a workable solution. Now, the other piece of your question was ABAG.
Right, and we've, we're at the 15 minutes now, but if you want to summarize your thinking on that, that's.
Well, I've railed against ABAG, as I know that some of you have, and one of the things that's very interesting to me is to discover that it is a voluntary, non-governmental body. So then, so then the question is, what clout does it have? Well, it's designated by the governor's office as one of the regional planning bodies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I would be very cautious about signing on for some of their housing quotas, not only for Palo Alto, which I know the council is being cautious about, but for some of the other communities as well. Because frankly, if you take the numbers for Palo Alto's, for Palo Alto, you'd have to hunt for land.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we're going to shift gears again, and we're going to go to the Historic Resources Board, and I would love to take a break. Yeah, we're going to have to take a break, because we've got a restroom, but we are, just so you know, 10 minutes behind, and so why don't we meet at 5 till? And then we will be 15 minutes behind.
That's all right.
And is everybody, David, is everybody here?
The next three are here.
The next three are here. Okay, good. Thank you.
We have two priorities tonight.
Was it a baseball score?
Not really.
Yes. Do you want to know what it was? Are you trying to? Six-four, nine.
Six-four.
No, no. Six or seven.
I think we have the old pro that are here.
I don't know why you're here.
Yeah.
I don't know why you're here.
Yeah.
We'll get serious in two minutes.
Please sit.
I can tell a lot of us are Giants fans. You're wearing the colors.
Yeah, you are.
So I'm going to speculate you might.
We have 10 minutes for each of our, we have 10 minutes for each of our applicants, and go ahead and, and give us your welcome, and then we can kick it off with questions and answers.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to take a shot at this. My name is Iqbal Saran. I have been in this country 40 years, went to junior high school, high school in San Francisco, and.
Oh, sorry, Iqbal, you can just hold the mic. There you go.
Went to junior high school and high school in San Francisco, and subsequently to Berkeley, and got my degree in Berkeley, and been working for architectural firms and taking my exams, and I'm now licensed and have my own practice, primarily residential work. I've worked for some firms here, Carrasco and Associates, and Spencer and Associates, and some known Palo Alto firms, and I know Martin Bernstein, who suggested that I should give this a try, and I know Dennis Backland, he lives in my building. I live in a historic building, the president's apartments, and I think there are a great number of historic buildings in this city, and I think we should do our best to preserve them.
Great. Okay. Anybody want to kick this off? Karen?
So, thank you for applying. And what do you think of historic preservation in Palo Alto? How do we do it? Well, not so well? What do you think?
I think we do, do well.
I should say, I should say, and whether well or not so well, why?
Because I think we are aware of, of the preservation values and the standards, and I think a great number of the public is also aware of that. There are a number of known historical buildings, like recently, the Varsity Theater Borders Bookstore has been in the news. There are a lot of these buildings are in the news, and I think more and more people are getting familiar with the requirements and the standards that need to be applied to preserve these structures and their interiors.
So the other part of the question is, what do we do well? If you said we do a good job, like what do we do well in preserving these buildings? How do we do that?
Well, perhaps we, we have defined the, the standards and, and the standards that we have adopted, the federal standards, the, and given that, there are, I think, every city organization has to be somewhat flexible, as long as we clarify and define the, the specifics of the character or the usage of that particular structure. And so, the preservation varies from, from structure to structure, and perhaps just the environment, perhaps just the usage. And I, I can, for instance, the post offices is now going to be sold, perhaps, to the city, or perhaps a, a commercial development. I hope the, the structure and the, the space, the lobby space that's there will be preserved and, and retained, and the usage will be more adaptable to the structure and the spaces itself, as opposed to dividing some parts inside for office use or some other uses that perhaps is not compatible with, with the structure as it's.
Gail, then you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. In your architectural work, have you had any experience or much experience related to work with historic buildings?
Not direct experience, but a great deal of experience talking to Dennis Backland from time to time. He lived on my floor, and Dennis is a, is a serious historian, I believe, and just occasionally getting to know some of the, the projects that have come up and the thinking that he has on, on some of these issues, but specifically now.
Okay, thank you. Also, you were talking in terms of adaptive reuse, which is kind of a phrase that's been in the literature for many, many decades. Can you think of examples where, how do you balance sort of reuse and adaptation in terms of a use of a structure while maintaining its historical integrity and, you know, addressing the guidelines and that kind of thing?
Well, I'll, I'll take the example that I just suggested in regards to the post office. I think that post office building is, is a Birch Clark building, similar to the president's hotel apartments where I've been living for a number of years. I look at that space as, first of all, the exterior has a major statement, it's somewhat of a combination of California federal type of structure. The inside is also, the materials that I use are historic, there are marble and travertine marble and so on. And so, I would think that that space, for instance, would, would work well as a large restaurant café, because there's a, a big space, sort of a colonated space outside and inside. I would hate to see that, the lobby space get divided, and, and I think it shouldn't And, and to identify the characteristics of that building as to what makes it historic apart from, I think apart from the historic part, it is a beautifully designed building, and, and that, that should be emphasized and, and retained and clarified.
Thank you. Liz?
So, thank you for applying. So you've identified five structures under number four. Birch Clark, the hotel, post office, Varsity, the main library, along with 1000 Forest, which I've always particularly liked. They're all different in some way. Can you say, and, and this is, as you said, these are good examples, but why? Why did you pick those five?
They came to mind. I did want to include a, a wood structure, a Victorian structure. I think the Bay Area is, is very fortunate to have a great number of Victorian structures, and being from San Francisco, that went through a rehabilitation in the 70s and, and the 80s, and that was just superb for it. And so, I, I wanted to vary my, my list if I could. The, the Victorian, I, I believe the 1000 Forest mansion was, a number of mayors owned that at one time or another. The, I have known people who have lived there, it was a co-op for a while, and, and again, the, the integrity of that structure remains, and it's a beautiful mansion. I don't know if I'm answering the gist of your.
Yeah, I, I did though think, and this is an odd thought, but I'm from New England, and I was thinking, if we were to put these homes in the middle of my hometown, the entire community would fall apart, and they would say, this isn't compatible. And I know Karen often talks about compatibility, and I was thinking, that wouldn't be compatible. But it's very interesting that we get used to a certain style and like it, and I very much like Birch Clarks. But I, I'm fascinated because I'm thinking it's very much, as we've described it, is contextual very much of our city and very much what we're used to seeing.
Okay. Well, that, we've got a few seconds, if you'd like to summarize or tell us anything further.
I think it's, it's incumbent upon the board and, and the city council to bring the attention of the public towards the, the significance of, of historic structures. All the historic board does is basically try to implement that vision. And very simply, history makes us feel better, makes us feel stronger of ourselves, and, and helps us to, to move forward in, in aspiring ways. And that being the, the basics of, of the need for historic structures and, and the preservation for it.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for applying. And the next four are incumbents, and we do have four open seats, and it'll be Martin Bernstein, you're here, and then after that, Michael Mackin, and then Margaret Wimmer, and then Roger Kohler. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mary Shepherd.
And go ahead and give us a minute or two introduction.
Sure. So, Councilmember Berman mentioned earlier this, this evening about the cities in Europe. I'm in Europe often, and one of my personal responsibilities and professional responsibilities is understand what makes an urban environment beautiful. And the answer to that is looking at the principles of design, so texture, harmony, balance, contrast, they all apply to all the arts, and I try to apply the answers to why is something beautiful to whatever comes before the HRP. That's, I see it as my responsibility.
Okay, do we have any questions for Martin? Karen, and then Gail?
So, as an incumbent, I have a pretty direct question. So, I look at, I look at, and thank you for your years of service, you've served several years on the HRP, and much appreciated.
You're welcome.
So, on response to question four, it says, identify project to project, you find examples of good historic architecture, and explain why. It says, several homes in Professerville that conform with the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation. So one is, it's not a very specific response, but the other is, I have brought up over years that the city of Palo Alto has a very understated, let's say, definition of demolition. So when I look at projects that happened in Professerville, and I go by an historic home, and there's nothing left but a skeleton, I want to know how that's historic preservation, and if you'd comment on that, I'd appreciate it. It's a tough ball question, but it's one that needs to be addressed.
Well, demolition is, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
And what does the HRP, what do you propose, or what have you initiated, or what discussion have you prompted at the HRP to address that?
As people know, anytime there's a demolition of historic structure, that cannot be mitigated, so that is a tragedy from the historic preservation point of view. Whatever strength of municipal code allows prohibition of demolition, which I, for most structure, there is no prohibition of demolition in Palo Alto, except for Squire House and, and Ramona Street. So, is that, is that correct?
I think downtown, category one.
Yeah. So residential, there's, there's no prohibition on demolition. So, so the answer, the next part of your question is, what can be done or what has been done?
And what has the HRP done?
Yes. What I've done on the HRP is to promote the idea of, the idea of carrots and not sticks. And the prime example is a project on, right across from the Hewlett Packard garage on Addison Street. It was a, as council members may know, in, in one of our chapters, there are about 14 different exceptions you can apply for, home improvement exception, and that can translate into a $175,000 instant profit to a developer, anyone who wants to develop in Professerville, who is a historic category. The example we use, and I promote this idea a lot, and I promote the idea of carrots and not sticks, the way that works is you can apply for an additional 250 square feet of, of, of living area. If that costs $300 a square foot to build, and in the moment you get your certificate of occupancy, that's worth $1,100 a square foot, that's $800, $750 a square foot, instant profit, that's $175,000 bucks. Who cares how you get the historic preservation? That's what I try to promote. There's economic value.
Is it okay if I follow up on that, or?
Of course.
I don't want to gobble all the time.
You've got the table.
So I appreciate the example, and carrots are great, but what I see is that somebody could take advantage of that extra floor ratio and still get the building down to a skeleton and still take advantage of that. So that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah. The, if there is a, there are several homes in Professerville that are in that state of construction right now, they're down to the skeleton. If it's determined that there is a lot of rot, for example, shingles last for about 100 years, and many homes in Professerville are over 100 years. So that, if that shingle, if the shingles are, are enforced to be kept, actually, you're hurting the historic resource, okay? Because then you get water intrusion and rain and, and rot. So actually, a lot of those materials must come off if they've spent their lifetime. So that, that becomes in the incumbent of, if whatever is replaced, how does that follow the Secretary of Interior standards to meet those federal regulations that Palo Alto has adopted? So that the historical feel is still there. Buildings rot, and so, and we are not a museum city, I mean, the ordinance is not saying preserve, it's, it's rehabilitate. And rehabilitation may require that kind of demolition, I'm using one of your words, so that it lasts for another 100 years. Okay. It's architect, it's the historical feeling is, is a significant part of it, and if it takes restoration, renovation, so it lasts for the next generation, as opposed to just wiping out.
Gail?
Thank you for your service. Nice to see you. What do you think, in your opinion, the HRP could have done better or more effectively? That's my first question. And my second question, what have you learned during your service on the HRP?
The first question about what can we have done better, more effectively, I think part of the answer to that is, and I'll make this first statement first, is that whatever ordinances come out of the, the city administration reflects the culture of the city. Okay? So if there is a pro-preservation, you mentioned, Liz, about some of the cities on the East Coast where there are very strict things, like the house shall be this, and, and there's no, no debate.
Color, texture, the whole thing.
Yeah. Okay, so Palo Alto is, it's not, that's not the culture of Palo Alto, we're too innovative to think about, okay, we're going to preserve things like that. So, now, my answer to your question, Gail, about education is, who are the, who's the next generation of preservationists? So those are going to be high school kids, who are people in their 20s, okay? And there's a lot of people in that age group in Palo Alto earning money who can afford these things, I mean, there, there is. So how do those people get educated? And I think that's what the HRP can do for education. I counsel freshman college kids and sophomore in high school and freshman in high school about architecture. Last year, I taught a class at Caesar Chavez Academy in East Palo Alto, 11th and 12th. So I was told, teach these kids something. Those of you who have a teaching experience, who teaches who? So the first question I asked, first class, I said, what's architecture? Christine, and this is all Latino students. First, I asked, what's architecture? Christina raises her hand, she goes, 12 years old, "Architecture is constructing your imagination."
The reaction you had.
I had, and I said, there's nothing else to say. The rest is all technicality. Does it meet building codes? Does it meet zoning regulations? Is it buildable? Does it meet the budget? And I told my colleagues, I have a luncheon every, every other month, a group of architects, and I said, here's what this 12-year-old said, and they did exactly what you did. They, they said, there's nothing else to say. So who teaches who? So, but to answer your question, whatever, and I've made some comments in my application about what can we do to educate? about what can we do to educate? And that's why I try to be in different boards and commissions and public speaking and to, you know, put that word, put that word out.
What have you learned?
I think being on the board is similar to attending a university class because not only do I, I'm outside of my own comfort level of design and buildings, but I'm hearing the emotional content of applicants who are nervous about government regulation on their private property. So, what I have learned is that when we talk about, going back to the word of the benefits of having historic property, and you've seen real estate ads where the property values are up, that once people see there's value rather than being afraid, if I can add to the conversation where people are not afraid anymore, then they see, oh, maybe there's some beauty here. And because if we're not afraid, then we can see the beauty. Yeah. And so, I've learned to speak in a manner that might encourage that transition from fear to appreciation.
Okay, Liz, real quick.
Thanks. You know, you've done this for a long time and I appreciate it. Quickly, do you recall back in, I think maybe in the late 90s, I don't remember when the exact vote came through, that we actually took up historic preservation as a community?
Yes.
My recollection is it was 10,000 to 9,000 or something like that. Is that anything we should ever revisit?
The, right now, our ordinance is based on voluntary compliance.
Right.
And given-
It would not have been voluntary, right?
Correct. And I, the voluntary is, I mean, I've seen plenty of examples where it's working because you can, there are 14 different exceptions you can apply for historic property. Daylight planning, lot coverage, setbacks.
But the argument would be those who choose not to. So, that, and that was the argument at the time, but I'm bringing it up mostly as a rhetorical question because it was such an enormous discussion in our community. And I think we've also noticed as neighborhoods have begun to preserve themselves, which is a fascinating happening, I think, in our community. But I very much appreciate what you and your colleagues do.
Well, thank you very much, Martin.
You're welcome.
And, yeah, for your service and for applying again. Our next, let's see, our next applicant is Michael McKinnon.
Michael McKinnon.
McKinnon, thank you.
I have a brief background from my experiences because the form was so small.
Uh-oh, how many pages?
It's just one page.
Okay.
Actually, one of my previous applications gives my experience. My parallel life at NASA as a Federal Historic Preservation Officer.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself and give us an introduction?
Okay, my name is Mike McKinnon. I live at 851 University in a category three historic home and which I've been rehabilitating as one of my own personal projects for the last 15 years. Outside of that particular project, I've been probably involved with historic properties for the last 20 years. I was a former owner of a Frank Lloyd Wright house, a member of the Frank Lloyd Wright Conservancy, Building Conservancy. And as this other application shows, I served as the Federal Historic Preservation Officer of Moffett Field for a number of years since 1998. And I retired in 2006, but I'm still working as a consultant on various projects, including the transfer of 1,600 acres to Google as part of the Planetary Ventures lease of the property that was deemed to be unnecessary to NASA's primary mission. Includes the three dirigible hangars and the historic district and a number of other properties. But that resulted when the NASA administrator declared that property to be not required for NASA's mission, so it went to GSA. GSA being the ultimate disposal agent for government property. We said we can't sell it because there's environmental issues, so RFP was put up on the street and Google, through their subsidiary Planetary Ventures, bid on it. And they're just in the process of signing the lease right now. It's been approved by the State Historic Preservation Office. So, I think a lot of my experience-
It's buzzing.
So, a lot of the experience that I have gained working as a Federal Historic Preservation Officer has been directly applicable to the work in Palo Alto. We publish reuse guidelines. We nominate a building to the historic. We had many dealings with the State Historic Preservation Officer, dealings with the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, and dealt with- Worked with a number of architectural consultants, including Page and Turnbull, architectural resources for various projects. All those parallel activities have enhanced my ability to contribute to the city of Palo Alto as a member of the Historic Resources Board.
It's the antenna on the bottom. When the antenna is assured-
It wasn't turned on.
Oh, it wasn't turned on, okay.
Okay.
So.
All right, do we have questions? Okay. I'm just putting your name down first time.
Okay.
Karen probably knows your best.
So, thank you, you've also served for several years and thank you very much for that service. As I'd said to Martin, it's like as an incumbent, I'll ask you harder questions. So, the HRB requires a lot of expertise and ongoing training. And yet, the HRB is advisory to the ARB.
Right.
And oftentimes, the ARB meeting is the day after the HRB meeting. And I want to know your thoughts on that and if you, first time of your thoughts on that.
Well, I actually served on a joint HRB-ARB committee.
Right, and it was so-
The South of Forest project. And that was quite an extensive project, so I did have dealings both with the ARB and the HRB for, that went on for a couple of years.
But currently, and that was several years ago, so, but right now, it's like ARB is, excuse me, the HRB is recommending to the ARB. So, do you think that works and does it work for the meetings to be the very next day or what do you?
Well, I think it generally works, but probably the part that may not work so well is at the last minute, they ask for somebody to show up to advise the ARB. And not enough lead time is given for people to make arrangements, you know, they have appointments and like that happened today. There was a request for somebody to show up tomorrow to the ARB.
So, do you think if this is a problem, shouldn't the HRB make recommendation for changes?
I think it's probably the policy, whoever sets the policy on how the ARB works with the HRB, that has to be streamlined a little bit better. If they want a representative to be there, they should make that known a little bit in advance so people can make their schedules open.
Grab the opportunity.
Greg?
Yeah, I'm still a little puzzled about the HRB. It's goal to preserve our historic heritage and can offer significant incentives to do that. But it seems to be very focused around within 10 blocks of City Hall, the Professerville Historic District. And, you know, over the last few years, some real history of Palo Alto has been lost. The Brioni's House disappeared without any initiative by the HRB. And probably the most important, building in town's history is the Fairchild Building and that is not listed on any city as a historical site. But I noticed a lot of your work at NASA is not necessarily with beautiful historic buildings, but buildings where something happened. So, why don't buildings where something happened, where Palo Alto was made?
For significant events? Well, that's one of the criterion for nomination to like the National Register or most registers. One of the points would be, did something of significance happen there? And if it did, it certainly is one of the qualifiers for listing as historic property.
Shouldn't the HRB be spending time on that issue?
Yeah. And probably if you point out the Fairchild Building, that may well be one that does have a lot of significance as a technical building. The birth of the semiconductors.
Yes, both the state and the IEEE have identified it as a building, but the city has not.
That's an interesting point. I had, it never been brought up before about the Fairchild Building.
Yeah, and I'm sure there are other places in Palo Alto where things happened, but it's not part of the discussion, the purview, in a way, of our historical preservation.
Perhaps we should spread our wings a little further and look for some of these obvious omissions.
I was gonna-
Good point.
I was going to ask, I know that you're doing the Professerville Guidelines.
Yes.
And I just-
The whole, members, various members of the HRB are working on it, you know?
Right. And I know it's going to come to council. Is this an initiative from the HRB? So, I can't remember how that got started.
Well, it was to, it was like an educational outreach effort. That was the basis for it. And we talked about it and we felt that that would be something that would enhance our ability to communicate with the public and better convey our message.
Okay.
I know the other city that I admire in their work is Pasadena. They do a marvelous job as far as educating the public. And I'm not real active in there, but I remember Pasadena Heritage. And I would hope that we could adopt some of their policies to that.
Okay, yeah. And then, I guess I might be a little ignorant here. We've got a couple historic districts, Green Meadow and Green Gables. Do we play a role there at all or what is the difference?
That was a citizen-led effort to get those nominated, but it was strongly supported by the HRB when it came before the HRB.
Okay, so that-
The Eichler.
Yeah, so you got a-
Certainly very significant.
And then you weighed in on the Edgewood Plaza for the buildings.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the only commercial Eichler project ever built.
Oh.
Yeah.
Forgot about that. Okay.
Joseph Eichler died in poverty, by the way. Joseph Eichler died in poverty.
The same thing I just asked Martin. We had this item that was very contentious in our community, late 90s, had to do with historic preservation. Should we have more historic preservation than we do?
I think it's probably at a good, comfortable state where it is right now. Most of the people, as I heard Martin talk about, people resist being forced to do something that's mandated.
Of course, though.
You get better results by trying to draw them in and educate them to the values of historic preservation. I truly believe, I do it on my own personal life, the things I'm doing, restoring other properties, and I think the best way is to educate them of the benefits of it rather than trying to force it on them.
I'm lamenting the house at the corner of Churchill and Waverly, which is going to change dramatically. And I think that's one of the ones I would have liked to have seen preserved.
There are properties that disappear. Very unfortunate that that does happen, but we try to save as many as we can and do a good job of convincing people that this is the proper thing to do.
I'd love to see us save more, to be honest.
I would too. My personal, my personal house was owned by the city of Palo Alto for two years. It was a drug rehab house and-
There were quite a few of those.
Yeah, it was, somebody gifted it to the city. They thought that they were going to make it into an old folks home. The city turned it into a drug rehab halfway house.
Probably 74 or 75, right?
I followed the articles in the paper and for the first half year, it was a great idea. Then six months later, we're having problems. In two years, how do we get rid of this? So, I went back into private hands and it was quite a job undoing a lot of things that had been done.
Sorry. Well, thank you very much.
Okay.
And thanks for your service.
I enjoyed it. Best unpaid job in town.
Yeah. And our next applicant is Margaret Wimmer. She is also an incumbent. Welcome. And we're just allowing people to do a little introduction and then we'll go into question and answer and it is a 10-minute interview. So, go ahead.
My name is Margaret Wimmer and I am a resident of Palo Alto. And I have been doing residential design in this community for at least 25 years. I currently sit on the board and have been enjoying my, I actually overtook someone's position that they couldn't fulfill their term, so I stepped in. So, in terms of my experience, I have a degree from the College of Architecture from Arizona State University. And I have been doing residential design pretty much ever since then. I've done several historic projects, so I have been a presenter to the board numerous times. So, it's kind of interesting to be on the board and reviewing projects. I think that maintaining the historic character of Palo Alto is really important. I, I've always been fascinated by historic design and think that current architectural design always needs to look back and see a reference of the historic design that's been the precedent of today. So, I think that preserving the historic character of the buildings that we have is something that's really worthy of the efforts of the city.
Great.
I'm going to jump in ahead of Karen this time.
Sure.
I think when you sit there and you're thinking, I'd give a totally different answer to the people who have already spoken, do you want to speak to any of the questions that we've just been asking people who have been here? Because this is a great opportunity.
You know, I, when I came in, they told me that they were running late, so I just sitting out in the lobby, so I didn't have a chance to witness anybody else's interview. So, so if you, if you don't mind re-asking the question, I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize that people were sitting here being interviewed, but I was just, I thought it was a different meeting and they said, oh, you're not and you're, we're running a half hour late, so I just sat out in the lobby, so.
Okay, so with apologies to all the incumbents, thank you for your service. You've only been there how many years? Three? Something like that?
I have actually not even been there for quite a year. I think I-
Is it that short a time? Okay.
That's why you look so familiar.
Right.
I've become accustomed to your face there.
Our timeframe, right.
So, I've become accustomed to your face being there, so. So, as an incumbent, though, I've been asking with apologies more difficult questions. So, you haven't been there that long, so I won't be so tough on you. So, what do you?
Thank you in advance.
So, as I look at preservation in Palo Alto, and I've been involved in that for a long, long time, it's like, what do you think about projects in Professerville? Because I, you know, look around, walk around, and I see these skeletal structures. And I'm sort of thinking, you know, during the, Liz mentioned the preservation conversation that we had, you know, 15 years ago or so. And there were, you know, conversations about, oh, we don't want Disneyland-ish buildings. And I see some of these historic projects going on and for me, it's like there's still a little left that when they get rebuilt, they're like Disneyland replicas of what really was historic. So, that's just my opinion, so you're welcome to counter that or agree with it or whatever. But what do you think, what do you think of those projects? Are they historic preservation or are they not? And what the HRB is doing is good or not good enough or, say whatever you'd like. It's an open door.
Well, I think that what the HRB is doing is good.
Well, I think that what the HRB is doing is good in terms of having sort of a review process, I think, because what that does is have a conversation with the architects and the homeowners who are wanting to remodel or do something to their existing historic homes. And even I myself can say, as an applicant presenting in front of the board, I always feel like I walk away with a better project, because I have all these eyes on the project and giving me feedback and comments. So, as an applicant, I've always, you know, I've always thought, "Oh, darn, you know, I have to make changes or do something." But in the end, I think, I think the project has benefited from that. In terms of things looking Disneyland-like?
Because of the level of deconstruction or demolition, depending on how one looks at it?
I think maybe that has to do with the selection of materials. I mean, that might be something in the finish work. Maybe that's probably not a result of the structural or the integrity of the structure. It's got to be what you're seeing in terms of the materials and how it's detailed and finished, maybe. So.
Just to be clear, what I'm referring to is buildings that are really skeletons in Professoreville?
I guess without knowing of a specific project, it'd be hard for me to generalize on all the buildings there, but.
Just a quick example would be on Lincoln just off Bryant, on the north side of the street, setback off the street, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Gail? Welcome and thank you. How have you contributed to the HRB? And what have you learned from your colleagues, from the staff, or from applicants? That's one question. And the second, are there things the city staff could do to improve your experience as a member of the HRB?
Well, some of the things that I've learned, being on the board, have been, you know, it's been interesting for me to work on a committee, because in my practice, I've always worked by myself, literally. So, it's nice to have an opportunity to work with other professionals and that share my common interests. One thing that I've learned is sort of how the city works in terms of the government and how the processes and the formalities and having meetings and the correct procedural things for the meeting. So, I mean, of course, it has nothing to do with the historic design or the historic preservation, but just the protocol of meetings and things is something that, you know, I, from the outside, it seems easy, but I think there's a real formality in certain steps that I think I still have a lot to learn from that. I've learned from the other board members. It's interesting that I don't really interact with them as much as I thought. I think the most, the interaction I get with them is actually sitting, you know, in the council chambers, so the more, you know, the more meetings we have, the more I get to know them. But I really appreciate their perspective on the various different projects, and it's just interesting to understand with their different, with the different experiences and the different backgrounds of the different people on the boards. It's interesting to hear their perspectives. And what was your second question? I'm sorry.
It was, are there things the city staff could do that would improve your experience as an HRB member?
I have to say that, I have to really commend the staff, because they do a remarkable job in researching the different projects, and they sort of lead us to a point where it makes it very easy for us to understand the material, to get a grasp on the project, and they kind of lead us to a point where it's very easy for us to make a decision. It's amazing how much information they present to us, the background information, the research, and everything, I think, has been above and beyond what I would have ever expected it to be. So, I think the staff has done a remarkable job.
Greg?
You made a very nice statement upfront, said the goal is to protect historical design that had an influence on the city. I guess I've noted that Eichler does not get a big mention at the HRB, and yet, you know, his designs have had a big impact. And as a matter of fact, there's quite a discrepancy in that the Professoreville Historical District has incentives for rehabilitation, while any Eichler neighborhood that wants to protect historical design has to initiate it on their own and pay the costs of it. Why the discrepancy?
I actually think that the houses that were designed by Eichler are just now entering that timeframe of age that, but I think they're becoming actually very popular with the resurgence of the popularity of mid-century modern architecture. I think that, and there has been, well, the Edgewood Plaza was an Eichler-related project that came up in front of the board.
Right, and what's happening in the Eichler neighborhoods is their redesigns are under IR, which gives very little protection to the neighborhood. So, the-
Well, I guess that's just the burden of the people who are, live in Eichler homes and love that design. I think, I mean, I think that they've come together as a community themselves, and they have, I think, a newsletter and websites and things. So, I think they are creating their own community, and I think they could take it a step further and have a design review process, I guess. I see your point that it's not something that the city has taken on, but-
Yeah, I guess the question specifically is the HRB. Why, why isn't the HRB?
Why haven't we taken that on?
Yeah.
Well, I think the city would have to take that on. I think the committee doesn't come up with those procedures.
Operating on historical codes rather than-
I guess so.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for your service. And then, we have one final interview with Roger Kohler, and again, an incumbent. I think so, they're winning right now. Don't take it off. Just stay still, yeah.
As long as they continue to win, which they're doing, Roger. As long as they're winning. You can keep it on.
Six-four.
Okay, so, just a quick introduction, and then we'd probably like to interview you. Welcome, and pick it, yeah, pick up the mic.
Thank you for having this interview. I've been on the board a long time, and I think this is the first one I've been to, except a long time ago when a certain council member suggested I apply for the Historic Resources Board, and she's sitting right here, Ms. Liz Niz. And so, I went ahead and did that, and it's been quite a run. And I think the board, over the time, has had a lot of exciting things, and some, in some cases, desperate things happened. And we've learned a lot, how to handle a lot of the different things that have come around. I brought in these boards with the photographs, and I'm not exactly sure who did the photographs, but I ended up with them. And almost everyone has had work done to it under the guidance of the City Palo Alto Resources Board. And you can, by recognize, most of them, that they're done. The one on the, you know, the bottom middle one and the third is a fairly modern home in the middle of Professoreville. That was one of the homes that started a discussion about Professoreville Guidelines, of which I'm on the committee with Martin, and we're working on updating the single-family homes. And a couple other things I just think that have happened, there was a time in the water tower on Elm was going to get sold when surrounded by hotels and things, and so I was, somehow I ended up being the point run on that. And it was an interesting evening, the City Council, I think you were there, and it won, it was disvoted on five to four to keep the water tower. So, it was five women against the four men. So, I tell that story, and I think it's, I don't know if it tells anything or not, but, okay. And then, there's been some, there was the time when we had the Deans and Moore listing, and we always met in this little room here, and it was literally packed with people, I mean, in the hallway, everywhere, complaining of that they didn't want their home put on the historic list. And that's the Deans and Moore list that you probably are familiar with. And now, we meet in the other room, and sometimes it's, we're there with two staff members, and that's it. So, I don't know if the new addition allows us to have a smaller room or not in that time, but, and today, we had a very interesting meeting about the baseball, Little League Baseball on Middlefield, which I, as a kid, was there, played, I don't think I was on the team, but my son, Matthew, was there for at least two years playing there. David played there as well, David Bauer. So, it was kind of an interesting discussion on how that all worked out, and we'll see what happens. It eventually comes to you guys as well, so. So, I think the Historic Board plays an important role, and I think over the years, it's gained a little more prestige and understanding as to what our role is, and that's been a big help, that we've had some pretty good staff people helping us, and we now have some new people coming in, which is going to be good. I think it's going to work out well with the new folks, so.
Okay. Karen, are you? So, thank you, Roger. You've served for a long time, and if you didn't hear, it's like since the incumbents, I'm being a little harder on. So, you all have talked about in one realm or another about education. I know you served with Marty on that, Guidelines, compatibility guidelines for Professoreville. So, Greg mentioned about the Eichler neighborhoods. And one of the things that I have been a little frustrated about is the HRB doesn't seem to initiate much. So, in terms of, so in terms of, you know, reaching out to the Eichler neighborhoods and about education, it's like we have a single-story overlay process, neighborhoods can apply for preservation or conservation overlays. Why does the HRB not do some kind of outreach and education in those kinds of realms?
I'm not sure I have a good answer to that. I think it's not probably been something that's been, we've heard from, from public at all recently. I can give you an answer why I think it's happening now, because, you know, we work and designs homes in Palo Alto's, and what's happened is, a lot of the homes up at this end of town, the lots are becoming very scarce. So, there's, what's happened is, the building of homes has moved south, and we're now in the midtown area. And so, now what's happening is, we're now getting further down toward East Meadow, so we're now getting closer to where homes are more popular and the homes are available in the southern end of town. So, that, it might mean that we should probably look into some of that. And the Eichler neighborhoods are certainly one that if they're not under some sort of guidance, ought to probably think about looking into doing that. I know my office mate is Mike Cobb, and he's, his neighborhood is protected downright off there of Charleston, and I live on Wilkie Way at the very end of town. I'm two houses from the creek. So, and I'm starting to see more signs in my little neighborhood, the white signs of new homes getting in that little section of our town. So, I think that there's a general drift from this end of town toward the south end of town, and so, it may not only be just the Eichler neighborhoods, but just some other neighborhoods that are having an impact, so.
So, what would you see the HRB's role, or do you think the HRB has a role in educating neighborhoods about what they can do, or?
Well, I think if it became, if it was a suggestion that came from enough people or from you guys, I think we'd take it on and work on it and come up with some sort of ideas of how to respond to that. And I think it probably is, the Eichler neighborhoods are really kind of an unusual situation, and, you know, I cut through their lot coming to work, so. And there's a couple real eyesores in the middle of the circles there, right next to, used to be Wilbur, but whatever it is now, JLS. Our kids went to JLS, yeah. So, yeah, I think that would probably be a good thing to do, because I've had clients come in asking about building new homes in the Eichler neighborhood. In that area, there right now are no, I don't think there's any rules. You can pretty much go through IR, and the IR folks are limited what they can suggest. There's the Guidelines, but it has nothing to do with the Eichlers around it. So, I think that's probably a good suggestion to make a start. I guess our board would be the first one to maybe kick it off, and then it goes, everything we do eventually goes to planning commission and to you fellows, folks, ladies. And so, that's would probably be something we'd be worth doing. We've worked on it in the past.
I was going to say, I did meet with a group, and they are trying to go through that, so they have more specific guidelines. It'll be interesting to see how they process, but Mark wants to ask a question.
So, I think you bring up a good point about how, you know, taking a closer look at some Eichler neighborhoods and protections we've put on, probably is a conversation that's to start at council and give direction. Are there any other things that you've seen over your 20 years of service on HRB that, you know, you think isn't getting enough attention, or suggestions that, you know, you feel maybe should come from council but hasn't?
Well, I think what maybe we haven't done enough of is recording in some sort of catalog, like most architects have a binder filled with stuff of what they've done. And so, maybe the HRB needs to put together with our people on the board photographs and putting together a little status of, "Here's what we've done." Because as I was looking across the street from right over here is the building that used to be a disco, and now is the real estate outfit, where Tim Trailer, Tim and Trailer, Zach, yeah, are there. And then, there's down the street here, so there's all in this neighborhood. And then, the little art club place just got reworked. That was one of our projects we looked at. So, it, and then, right over here, the church. We worked on that one as well, so. Yeah, and there's a lot in the neighborhood, and we actually reviewed something for the women's club who talked before us today. There was, they were doing some little work, and our board had to look at it. So, we probably could have a little committee and say, "Well, look, here's what this board has done and worked on." I generally do not think we've, I'm not sure we've really sat down and said, "What more can we do?" I shouldn't say this, but this is kind of a good board to be on, because we're so random when we meet.
Not every Monday night?
No, not every Monday night.
Days and Thursdays?
Eight o'clock in the morning, though.
Yeah, so, but I do think we, the board member has made up a really good group now, and, well, it always has been. We've lost some good people, and I think having the staff we have now is really good. So, we should be, we were up for that kind of thing.
Liz, you have a question? That'll be the last question.
And Roger, you do amazing service for the community. Because I think it sets the stage in some way. How many houses have you now designed and built in Palo Alto? Do you have any number that you recall?
It's, I'm not sure I want to say, but.
Oh, could we get a range?
Well, I think we've done, you know, and there's a few tract homes in there. I think we're up over 150 new homes.
Wow.
And 200 or more remodeling. There isn't, there aren't many streets we haven't done work on. But you have to remember, I started 40-some years ago. I'm getting old, so.
You were 12, you told me.
Yeah, well, the first home I did was for Matt Henenberg on, it's the home, that's the second-floor addition we did, and Heather, who's in her 30s now, was a baby, and we had, I played in a rock and roll band at one time. We had a band, the house was not done, it was all framed, and now his house shows up occasionally on historic, you know, Professoreville homes, when in fact, we did the second-floor addition all those years ago, but it's gotten so aged, it looks like it's 100 years old, so.
Thanks for everything you've done, though, for all of us. Yeah, thank you, and thank all the applicants.
I think it's good that you had such a good- I think it's good that you had such a good group tonight.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's an important board. And in some ways, it's going to become more and more important as it goes on.
Good to see you, Roger.
And at this point, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
Okay.